Okay, I've got six thirty, so I'm gonna get this started. I'm gonna call to order special meeting number eighteen sixty-seven of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a quorum, we have five regular members all present. Being that this is a special meeting, our agenda is much more streamlined, we're only going to be reviewing the application before us and not all the other parts of our regular meetings. So with that being said, we'll go right into our new business. We have application PZ twenty twenty-four dash zero three, a site plan modification at thirty South Main Street. Block seventy-one dash eleven dash zero zero seven, the owner applicant is TCWC Holdings East Windsor LLC. So who is here to speak on behalf of this application?
Mister Chairman, I am Attorney Peter Alter, I practice law in the firm of Alter and Pearson in Glastonbury, Connecticut. And here to this evening to represent the applicant owner. Also with us virtually is Mister Frank Carpino, who is one of the principals of the owner along with Steve Ensign, who is another principal. And they're available to provide additional information as needed. We have opportunity to help. Everybody's gonna have to bear with me, we have a PowerPoint that has the ability to provide the commission with some views of both the site and the plans for the site. And I'm hoping that I'm gonna be able to share that with you. This is the part that can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Right, okay. As the call for the meeting indicated, this is property located at thirty South Main Street at the intersection of South Main Street Route five and South Water Street. Mister Carpino and Mister Ensign and their company acquired this property in May of two thousand twenty-three. And as some of you may certainly be aware, this has been a car wash site since it was originally approved to be that in two thousand and three. So there's a longstanding use as a car wash on the site. And it was the intention of Mister Carpino, Mister Ensign to continue that use and to upgrade the property to a more modern car wash facility. I can tell you that the same group has done exactly that in Glastonbury with a car wash of longstanding on Main Street as well as one in Newington. In earlier exercises of redevelopment of car wash sites. The property is triangular in shape. It's more than an acre, fifty-eight thousand square feet with significant frontage on both South Main Street and South Water Street. Fundamentally, there was no change to any of the areas that would be part of the operation in terms of the location of the car wash building as well as entrances and exits on both South Water and South Main Street. After the acquisition in May of two thousand twenty-three, the site suffered a catastrophic water main break in September of two thousand twenty-three. It caused irreparable damage to both the equipment and the electrical system that had been acquired in May of two thousand twenty-three precipitating the need to do a complete redevelopment of the site. And it was with that intention that Mister Carpino and Mister Ensign went forward, what's on the screen now is what was originally approved in two thousand three and I believe started to operate later in two thousand four. As you can see, the building location has not changed. The entrances and exits have not changed and in this iteration, two thousand three, there was a very modern installation of vacuum machines in the area facing South Main Street. There were islands that held those large tube tanks with hoses that came out and a car could be serviced on each side of that structure for vacuuming out cars. So the site operated in that way, beginning in about two thousand four. What happened in the fall of two thousand twenty-three was that our clients thought that they understood what was required of them to move forward to redevelop the site into a site plan as is currently displayed. Mister Carpino, maybe you could add some information here in terms of what what brings us to seeking the site plan modification this evening? If you have a minute to speak.
Sure, members of the board, thank you for doing this special meeting. My name is Frank Carpino, I am one of the principals. I'm not sure if Peter's getting disconnected or if that's me.
No, I can hear you.
Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Before I explain what we were trying to do, I do want to take a minute to apologize for what happened. When we decided to make some minor changes to the site layout, we should have followed back up again with the planning and zoning staff prior to getting the building permit. We definitely want to be good citizens for the town of East Windsor. It was never our intentions not to follow the rules. I think being closed for so long, we were trying to move faster than we should have out of desperation. But with that said, the only major changes to this are the vacuums that's noticeably different. We wanted to stay within that hundred and twenty-foot envelope. But we upgraded the vacuums to the current vacuums that we have now that everybody uses, nobody uses the Canvacs anymore.
Okay, thanks Frank. The the area that
Not sure if you can still hear me.
Yep, can still hear you. The the area that Mister Carpino is referring to is the area that is shaded in red adjacent to South Main Street. That's the area where the vacuums were previously located in the canister arrangement and those have been replaced by the more streamlined and more modern arm vacuums with that operate as a central vac system, it's much more efficient and much more energy efficient and also much more environmentally efficient than the old style of of canister vacuum. This is a better close-up view of the area that would be utilized for those as well as the enhanced landscaping that is proposed between the edge of the vacuum area and South Main Street. This gives you a view of what the vacuum arms look like and that they're much more convenient for customers. And the central vac system provides a much better service to each of the client customers as they use that opportunity to vacuum out their cars. The there was an issue that came up when the pipe bars were received, they had those yellow touch-free letters on them already. They've been removed and as you can see from the photograph to the right on the PowerPoint, the bars exist now with those letters removed and they will stay off the the bars going forward, there will be no signage on those bars as the way they were received. There was a request for photometric plan, it's been provided with the set of plans that were submitted indicating that there is no light spillage off of the site as would be expected. And photometric plan is submitted for for that purpose to reassure the commission in that regard. These are the views of the building as it's been redeveloped. Again, this is the part facing South Main Street facing Water Street. The west elevation, which would be cars approaching to make use of the car wash area. And then the north elevation as you circle the building to enter to wash your vehicle. The opportunity to redevelop the site is something that obviously the applicant owner wanted to take because of the necessity of modernizing equipment that was more than twenty years old, they didn't anticipate having to do it quite so quickly and under such circumstances. But we think that the building as it presented now is is both attractive and an improvement over what existed on the site since two thousand and three. And as Mister Carpino indicated, it was really not with any intention to disregard your rules or to not follow the procedures that are required. But rather just a misunderstanding by them as to what process should be followed. As Mister Carpino indicated, they certainly want to be and intend to be good citizens of the community of East Windsor. We're happy to answer any questions. We did have an opportunity, staff was kind enough to provide us with a copy of the memo that was prepared dated February fifth. And we certainly have no concerns or disagreements with the conditions that are accepted or suggested for the commission to consider if it sees fit to act on this application. So we're happy to answer any questions that commissioners might have. Mister Chairman, do you want me to leave the plans up or stop sharing them or would you like me to do?
Yeah, you could you could leave them up in case somebody wants to reference one of the individual photos, so I think those were nine through twelve, I believe you had all your elevation photos?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess I'll go in the order I see on my screen here, so Dave, would you like to begin?
So yeah, I have a question about the vacuum. Do you have a decibel rating of what the vacuum outputs now as opposed to what was there previously?
Jim, do Jim, do you have that? I don't I don't have it the exact number off the top of my head, I don't, I can get that to you. I know it's
I'm sorry, I'm sorry everyone, I was trying to unmute myself, I'm Jim Porter, I'm also one of the one of the owners here.
Think that would be, nobody knew.
Yeah, so so yeah, what you had out there before were six vacuums and each had three motors in them, so you had a total of eighteen motors out those vacs and we have now is one collector that runs on one turbine. It's quieter, it's it's more, as Peter had pointed out, it's more environmentally friendly. Uses less power, all those sorts of things, but yes, it is it is quieter than the ones that were there. I don't have the decibel readings with me, but that is one of the reasons that people switched to those, there are many reasons, but one of them was 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 that just that, that those those old Canvacs were very, very loud. They used to, they used to try to put foam in the in them to try to quiet them down and do different things and
Right, you forgive me, I'm just trying to figure out to quantify what that is.
Yep.
Would you happen to have a cut sheet on your new canisters that you purchased on the new turbine system?
That's what I'm looking for right now.
While you're looking for that, Dave, do you have a different question?
No, right now, that was the first one I was focused on. I'll gladly let someone else ask something.
Yeah, that that was one of the Peter had brought up Glastonbury, that was one of the things that we did, we we were able to do in Glastonbury as well was get rid of all those Canvacs, those old loud Canvacs and put in a central vac system and you know, that was part of what was was helpful to us there, so I don't have exact, I can, we, I'm from manufacturers, we can get readings, but I can tell you that it is quieter.
Hey Jim, can you touch upon the fact that that turbine is closer to the building too as opposed to?
Well, yeah, it's close to the building, it's 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 enclosed in a fence whereas all those other units were out and wide open. Again, eighteen motors versus one one motor, we do a lot more with with the efficiencies that we've gained over twenty-five years of technology.
Right, but we should be able to have a cut sheet to quantify what that is. Make sure that what you've done actually is better, not just different, not just new.
Correct.
And following the rules, we would have known what it was before now.
Nobody, no, nobody ever took readings of existing vacuums at that site and we just bought the site in April, so we wouldn't have current readings of what those, what was there before.
Right, but knowing what was there, that documentation would be able to tell you what it was.
Correct.
Manufacturers data plates would tell you what it was.
Yeah, we would have to try to find data on that stuff, it's quite old, but I I'm not sure who would have it, but we could, we could try to find it.
Okay, Dave, do you have any other questions?
No, sir, not yet, no.
Okay. Next I have Jim.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so the getting back to Dave's vacuum system, the system was located outside now. That's not drawn anywhere on the plans.
The turbine?
Correct.
It should be listed on the drawings. Can we pull the drawings back up again? I don't know, where is it? Hold on.
If you, I don't know if you can see my cursor.
Can you enlarge that, please?
There you go. I believe it's in this area, this is an underground connector from the vacuum system to and Jim, you maybe Jim Porter could probably confirm this, that the that vacuum system is contained within that area.
That's correct, in the area right in front of the building there.
So it actually takes apart, it takes half the handicap parking space and half of that striped area, it's where actually sits right in front of there. If you go back to the other picture, there's another picture that you guys showed earlier that had a real picture that had that face of it. Nope, keep going, not that one. Right there. Back up, yep. So that in that gate right there is where is where the fence is, that handicap spot needs to be deeper, I would assume.
That to my knowledge was not a striped handicap parking spot.
Before, originally?
I don't believe so.
It pretty sure is.
It shows it on your drawing.
Yeah.
And and your drawing shows that there was a ramp installed there for handicap? So we, did you replace the ramp someplace else?
No, there was no, there wouldn't have been a ramp there to go anywhere, the elevations are all all the same.
Well, the the detail on the drawing says handicap ramp. It has, it has a reference to a detail of how it was constructed.
It it appears from the photo that 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 is a handicap parking space, it's got the handicap designation on it. There was and it also appears that this is a level site. And that over in the to the far right of the building looks like an accessible area.
I think that Yeah, there there was I'm I'm not sure about the plan that's there, if that's what that plan was, but I don't, I don't recall any handicap parking or ramps or anything in that area.
No, there's
Hundred percent, there was one there.
Yeah, there's a handicap spot there, there's no ramp, there's just the hash for.
So my two concerns were the vacuum's not on the plans and the second concern is now that spot has to be deeper because you took eight feet from it.
Yeah, we'd probably be better off moving the handicap spot closer to the office.
On the other side?
Yeah.
Do they have the parking for that staff of the film?
Yeah, there's plenty of parking.
All right, I won't, I won't get into the lighting right now, I'll save it for my fellow commissioners, I'm sure they got questions about the lighting, so I'm good for now.
Okay, Anne, do you have any questions?
Um, I guess a couple of statements, I've used that car wash many times. And I believe the area behind the fence that was kind of a part of the building may have had vending machines to buy cleaning supplies. And that may be why the handicap spot was there.
That's possible.
I was somewhat concerned over how bright the lighting in the bays was before you turned it down and it's much better now. I'm glad to see it come back as a touchless car wash because I've always liked that car wash because it was touchless, so I'm glad to see it stay in operation.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for them, ma'am?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you, Stacy? You're muted if you're saying something.
Mike, while Stacy is unmuting herself, these car washes usually have I'll call it the credit card swipe. If it's not manned, how do you know that no one will put one of those? I don't know what you call the device, but the device where they steal your credit card information on it. Does it have cameras?
The site does have cameras, each auto cashier has built-in cameras. And the sites also use chip to pay now as well. So it's a much, much more secure technology. That can't be I don't know, I know what you're talking about, where they put a physical piece of hardware over it.
Something gets, I don't know what they do, but
Yes, yep.
Dimmer, yes, yep.
So tap to pay has eliminated that.
Stacy, are you able to figure out you're mute? Your screen is frozen, Stacy. Okay, until we can get her reconnected. So a couple of things, so one of, we've already discussed you now propose relocating the handicap parking closer to the office. Can you show the the back elevation of the building to kind of give us an idea where that would be, so you'd put it on the side over here or you'd put it?
Yeah, we can. I I would like the handicap spot closest to the office, so if somebody's pulling up and needs assistance, they don't have far to walk to get to the office to get to an attendant. I'm not sure if it was put by the vending. But one thing to note is part of what we still have left to do is seal coat the entire parking lot and re-stripe everything. We just ran out of time with the weather. So we plan on re-stripping everything in the spring or maybe sooner if weather permits.
Is the is the striping plan dictated on your drawing?
It's not because we were just doing original striping, just cleaning everything up, going back over everything.
Okay. Is is Mike Tomato on by any chance? I, Daniella, is he with you by any, you're still muted.
I don't seem.
I saw his name pop up earlier, that's why I'm curious.
He's, he's had to lend us his Zoom account just because there's, it's already been taken up at the town hall, so he's not on tonight, he has a prior meeting to attend, but he
I don't know if you can answer this, Danielle, but we're we're talking about asking for a cut sheet, we're talking about updating the striping plan, relocation of handicap location, are these items that we can handle in our terms and conditions? Or okay, so
We can ask, oh, sorry, yes.
I was gonna say, we're gonna need to come up with some additional terms and conditions or we're going to have to do a rewrite or how's this gonna affect us here?
We can, we can add them into the, I can add them in, we had a couple of conditions on the original memo that I was going to address. It's got our standard conditions and then we're gonna scratch scratch number four about the touch-free signage because we already addressed that with the bars having been removed, so we could add on. We do have something saying that the plans need to be revised, right now we kind of have a hodgepodge of different pages and things added and so we are asking that a final set of plans come to us that are all all have a title block, particularly the photometric plan doesn't have one. Kind of just a cleaner set of plans, well, so what we can do is add a cut sheet to those plans as part of the condition. And I guess a notation, if they're redoing the same striping, I don't have the plans right in front of me, but we can have a notation that they'll be restriping what's existing. I don't have the plans right in front of me, but we can have a notation that they'll be re-striping what's existing and possibly mov- moving the handicap.
Well, that's a saying, and they're talking about changing the striping, so we need an updated striping plan.
Okay, with the handicap moved, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Also a location of the canister.
That needs to be added to the drawing, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah. Because what's, what's there existing for handicap is not, um, deep enough in compliance. Alright, Stacy, were you able to, uh, connect?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Sorry, I had to go back through settings and get it all rearranged and lost you guys in the process, um. Yeah, I'm satisfied with what you just reviewed, um, I think they were all good points brought up by the other commissioners. And I agree that the reduction in the intensity of the lighting has been good, as it's a, you know, a very well-traveled area for almost everybody in this town. Um, so I'd be satisfied with what you guys just spoke on, thank you.
Okay, um, I did have kind of a thought where it does speak in number five about the, uh. Illumination being maintained at fifteen percent between the hours of five PM and six AM. Um, should we have something additional in there that? If it were to be brought up as a complaint, that we have some flexibility to reduce that even further?
And, and jumping on your point, Mike, when the. Questioned for the applicant, when the car goes to the car wash. The lights blink, correct? Like flash, different colors and?
They, they do change colors, um, but the main sole purpose of the lights is for navigation. And package confirmation. So for example, when a, when a car is queued up to pull into the car wash, the lights will strobe green. To, to get the customer to queue up into the bay. And then once they're in position and the sonars have found the car, it'll turn red to stop. Um, so there's a navigation feature to it. And then it also provides package confirmation, so the consumer knows what they're purchasing is, you know, what they're getting is what they purchase.
It seems like when, even when there's no cars in the bay and you drive by on Route Five, the colors are changing.
Correct, it, it's a, um, like an active marketing feature of the machine.
That's, I think, the part that. People are referring to in the lighting.
Any way adjusting that or toning that down?
We, well, we have it turned down to fifteen percent, I don't know if you've seen it at night now, it's.
It's much better.
Yeah.
So I drive by there every morning at five thirty-five.
Okay.
So, I'm there three days, I saw when you guys were working on it, I saw when you guys had it, it's, it's definitely not as bright as it was before, I agree. But it's, it's still a lot to see. It, it's still pretty flashy, I was, the concern of mine was the neighbor that are right-hand side in that White House.
Yep.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if they've said anything about, about it, that's the only guy you really gotta worry about.
Yeah, and, and he's been over a few times, and he's actually commented on how, how at first he didn't like lights. And now he actually enjoys the lights, so I'm not really sure where he stands.
Mister Chairman, I think that, uh, perhaps the, the way to address this would be to. Uh, i- if, in fact, it, it becomes an issue, uh. By way of a citizen complaint that staff. Could make, uh, the operator aware of that and seek some resolution. Uh, i- if in fact it becomes an issue, and then if. That doesn't lead to a resolution, of course, it could always come back to the commission. That, that's was kind of where I was going with this, that, that we'd have some leeway in here that the applicant is. Amicable to working with us if there, you know, if it poses to be a problem in the future.
Yeah, I don't think we have a problem with that at all, again, our intentions aren't to be, you know, the bad neighbor here at all. We want to be part of the community, um, it's important to us.
And addressing any noise coming from the turbine vacuum.
I'm su- Yep.
Okay, does anybody have anything else for the applicant? So Danielle, uh, do you have, uh, guidance on how you wanna word additional terms and conditions? Mister Chairman, if I, if I could just summarize to make sure that we're all on the same page, um. My, my first note is that a cut sheet for the vacuum system will be added, uh, to the plans. To include, uh, the decibel noise level of, of that equipment.
Correct.
The second I have is to relocate the handicap parking space to, uh, a point nearer. The business office. And. Yeah, and we'll, we'll add some verbiage in there as, as mutually agreed upon by staff and the applicant. That's fine, and then, um. As part of this, uh, final plan set to be presented, uh. Uh, per what Danielle said, uh, we can certainly include, uh. Confirmation of the re-striping to duplicate, uh, that which exists, uh, at present. Or as, as an updated striping plan as you, as you feel, you know, it's gonna.
Right.
That serve your, your business.
That, that can be included in the set of plans.
Okay. So Danielle, how do we put that into our terms and conditions? I'm sorry, you're muted.
Um, looking at the. Looking at Ruth's motion, I would add to condition number one. Under conditions which must be met prior to issuance of certificate of zoning compliance, I would add to the one electronic PDF. One paper copy of the final ASBIL survey showing structures, pins, driveways, final floor elevations, spot grades. Cut sheet and updated re-striping. To be included.
We'll call it, uh, that, vacuum turbine cut sheet.
Vacuum turbine, okay. Sorry, I don't have all the fancy rewrite on the fly like Mike and Ruth usually do.
Okay, so we're gonna add vacuum turbine cut sheet and striping plan.
Updated, updated striping plan. With, uh, sorry, should, updated striping plan including relocation of handicap parking space?
Correct, as, as mutually agreed upon with applicant and staff.
Okay.
You give me a second, I'm, I'm jotting all this down.
Would you?
But we're gonna have to bring this up in the motion.
I think I, I've been writing it down too, Mike.
Okay, thank you, Anne. And then the file, that's, that covers all the, the three items that we were discussing.
The other thing we need to edit, I think, is under general conditions number five. Something about if complaints from the neighbors, um. If there's complaints from the neighbors, staff will work with the operator to reduce lighting. Further.
Um. So we'll put it something as. Applicant will work with staff for, on further reductions if warranted, something to that effect, is that?
Yep.
Counsel, do you agree with that also? Yes, okay.
And also location of canister on the plan too, Mike.
That's. That might be covered with the final ASBILs, so just you can make yourself a note to have that as part of the final ASBILs. Okay.
Can I ask one question about the lights?
Certainly.
So, when we say the lights in the bay, we're referring to the colored lights. Um, they do act as security lights too, because they light the bay up. Um, so if it ever does turn into an issue where we have a complaint and we need to essentially remove the colored lights. We will need to put some type of bay lights in there, uh, you know, we usually just a white bay light, um.
Do you, do you have the, do you have the ability to stop the strobing?
Um. I can try and get with the manufacturer, see if there's a way to do that, off the top of my head, I don't believe so, I think it's just all built into the equipment.
Can you control the rate now of how quickly it changes?
You can, um, and right now I think it's just on a changing.
I think if you left it one color, it might be less distracting.
Yeah, slow it down.
Yeah, I, I'm saying that's, I'm wondering if, if it has. That kind of adjustability in there, there may be, there may be ability, but at, at this point, the, the intensity reduction seems to be working and. We'll, uh, we'll see how it, how it goes from there before we have to.
Worry about how to fix it.
Exactly.
Cause maybe it's fine.
Okay, does anyone else have anything else they'd like to add to this? If not, I'll, uh, entertain a motion on this application.
Okay, I'm gonna try, you may have to edit me, um. I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty-four dash three. For site plan modification to an existing car wash located at thirty Main Street. Um. Map seventy-one, block eleven, lot seven. The owner applicant is TC WC Holdings East Windsor LLC. The reference plans and site plan are included in a memo. Revised two twelve twenty-four from Ruth Ann Calabrese to the commission. The memo contains. Four conditions which must be met prior to signing of the MYLARS. And we are editing. Condition number one to require in it, that, uh. Approved plans or revisions include a vacuum turbine cut sheet. And updated striping as agreed upon between the applicant and staff.
That's the location of the handicap, relocation of the handicap.
Um, I was going to put that in the number four for the, how the plans are revised.
Okay. That's, that's what that phrase was as agreed upon by staff, meant with the.
Your location of the. We'll just leave. Number one, under conditions which must be met prior to signing the final MYLARS as is. And modify number four in that set of conditions to read, to strike. The touch-free signage. Um, shall be changed to directional signage for the pay stations and replace that with. An additional cut sheet for vacuum system location and. Decibel noise rating. Updated stra- striping plan for the. Relocation of a compliant handicap parking space as mutually agreed upon by staff and the applicant. In, in its stead, and then. Continue on with conditions which must be met prior to issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance. There's one condition in the memo that will stand as is. And then there's five general conditions, and we will add to number five. If there are complaints from the neighbors, the applicant will work with staff. To address the color strobing of the lights.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion?
Yeah, next time I want to say, go on a record, bullet permit next time, please. So we wouldn't be here, that's all I got.
So. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much, and thank you again for scheduling a special meeting, it's much appreciated.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, thank you all.
Welcome.
Okay, so that concludes our agenda for the special meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Yeah, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous, meeting is adjourned at seven fifteen.
Good night, all.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Great night.
Good night.
Good night, thanks.